Education meeting back to order. It's now 1:20. And we're going to start with public comment. Each participant will have up to five minutes. Marilyn will call who's speaking and who's on deck, please.
Yes, our first speaker is Rahelio Landine and the second person is Kim Jones.
Superintendent, esteemed presidents of co-presidents and board members, good afternoon again, Rahelio Landine, President of Performance Ed. Wanted to share a few thoughts with you since last time we had an opportunity to change some things. Two weeks ago, I was invited to Boston for an event and had the opportunity to meet with Governor Baker. The Massachusetts miracle was anything but. It is the result of a 20-year commitment to a plan that worked for Massachusetts. A key component was dedicating resources which today average about 15,000 per student, twice our allocation. Their ESA plan for equity is committed to the elimination of gaps and inequities, not just reductions. Their student composition mirrors Michigan's with 39% low income and 35% children of color. They are focused on narrowing proficiency gaps, believing as I do that this leads to narrowed achievement gaps. There have been several reports during the last 30 days and then one prior, bridging equity through ESA from the Learning Policy Institute, leading for equity from the Aspen Institute and the Council of Chief State School Officers. Agree that equity is achieved by providing high-quality curriculum, multiple measures of success, adequate equitable resources, proven interventions, personalized learning, link learning, and blended learning. Just this week, America's Promise released a 20-year report entitled "Our Work", and the Michigan League on Public Policy released the Michigan Kids Count Report with a glaring 15% increase in poverty for our students. Over half of our third graders are not proficient in English language arts, two-thirds of our eighth graders not proficient in math. The Michigan League for Public Policy states budget is the single most powerful expression of priorities. Earlier today, you heard Chairman Haas speak about investment. And words from Ed Trust about let's get started now. The Michigan Department of Education's shift on accountability allows for a magnified focus on equity. The one thing that seems to be a consensus of support in, but the question still remains, how to pay for it. The point being is that success in equity will beget metrics in accountability. Performance Ed's solution is compliant, aligned, and responsive to every recommendation for equity, including the six E's now a part of the 10 and 10 Plan. General Colin Powell states at the conclusion of our work, "When it comes to young people, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We need to summon the will. Every child should have the chance to succeed. Every adult has the responsibility to make it happen. I am here exercising my responsibility. Exercise your voice. Let's make it happen. The buck should and can stop here if we work together." Once again, I appeal to you to please consider our resource equity solution as an answer, as a call to action for what begets not just the state of Michigan, but all of our districts individually and collectively. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kim Jones, followed by Linda Cypert Kilburn.
I would like to take the opportunity to thank the board for the opportunity to speak on behalf of concerned citizens of Pawpaw regarding the Pawpaw Redskins icon. First, I would like to say that we do not have a mascot. We have an icon, imagery, and logo. When this first came to light again in September, many of our community members were stunned. We do not and never have at any time used our imagery or logo for anything but positive and respect. There has never been any derogatory or racism in our community brought out by our Redskins icon. We as a community have been fighting this battle for a very long time and will continue to use the Redskins icon in a very respectful fashion. We have been the Pawpaw Redskins for almost 100 years. Both the state education board and the Native Americans have given us resolutions and both have said you would like the school to change, but you have left it to the local governing board. We in Pawpaw have voted and the community has given its support in staying the Pawpaw Redskins. But because it does not suffice a group of people, you are asking for us to be fined if we do not change. How does that seem fair? We as a community have embraced the Redskins icon and choose to educate, not eradicate. You have, you want the government to fine us. Where are our constitutional rights? We voted on this as a community. We chose to educate our community and have the endorsement from the Sioux Nation and the Native American Guardian Association. We also have received a resolution from the Sioux Nation and the Native American Guardian Association supporting us in full support of respectfully keeping the Pawpaw Redskins logo. We in Pawpaw do not have a large Native American population, but of the Native Americans that do live in our community and practice their heritage, we are supported by more than 80%. We have also have those same children have organized groups, not only for the Native Americans, but a culture awareness group for the whole community and all our students. We have done an extensive amount of research and have found the origin of the word Redskins to mean to us brave warriors that have painted their body in okra, a red dye, to prepare themselves for war. The Sioux Nation has sent speakers on their behalf to educate the Pawpaw community and so have the Native American Guardian Association. We in Pawpaw embrace the Redskins. We have been told that it is detrimental to the Native American students and to other students in our school. We ask, how can a word oppress someone and keep them from succeeding? We in Pawpaw have very successful students. We the Pawpaw Redskins stand with 91% of the American, Native Americans, and speak out for education, not eradication. We have sent the board a letter from our attorney representing the Pawpaw schools and other schools in Michigan that are being told to change their icons. We feel it is unconstitutional to force us, a whole community of taxpayers, to change our Redskins logo. We are asking the board to respect the vote that was taken in our community by our Board of Education that we voted in by our community to keep the Pawpaw Redskins icon. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Linda Cypert Kilburn is next, followed by Jim Farrar.
Good afternoon. My native name is Southern Thunder Woman. I'm Turtle Clan and I reside in the Albion Marshall area. I'm a mother, a grandmother of 57 and a great-grandmother of 17 with one new spirit coming in June. We're an extended Nishnabe family. And I have come here today to share with you about how Michigan has been invaded by an out-of-state organization which is now leading an attack on the leadership in Pawpaw, Michigan, along with individual educational leadership with the help of one resident, Mrs. Jones, who you just heard from, from Pawpaw, Michigan. And I'd also like to state at the last school board meeting there in Pawpaw, there was many members that got up and spoke saying she did not represent their community, nor did she represent them. Mrs. Jones has stated a recent Pawpaw school board--
Can you not use names, please?
Pardon?
Can you not use names, please?
Okay. It has been stated at the recent Pawpaw school board meeting that their lawyers have approached the Michigan State School Board Superintendent with a letter defending the use of the Native American imagery here in Michigan, which you just heard. We as citizens of the good state of Michigan now have an out-of-state organization trying to tell us how we feel as Native Americans, Nishnabe, here in Michigan. They are also trying to tell us we do not know our own history. This out-of-state organization says natives need to be educated about their own history because we do not know the truth, that Redskins is not belittling derogatory degrading, and that the 12 federally recognized tribes here in Michigan is wrong and that we should be feeling very proud that they're honoring us. We here in Michigan are all in this together for the children, the students of Michigan, our future residents, citizens, and leaders. I would like to share with you to review this information about the out-of-state organization that we were given by people who have come in contact with this organization in their states. These people are also making changes in the states against the use of Native American imagery and they are also dealing with this out-of-state group. They are perpetrating people from outside of their own state and why? Why is Michigan so important to this out-of-state organization? We are not alone on this issue. States like Massachusetts and New Hampshire are looking at legislation. Many schools here in Michigan and across this great nation have made changes, as you know, along with universities and colleges. These institutions have made progress for their communities and districts by moving forward and doing what is best for their students. We here in Michigan want to see the same thing for our children and grandchildren and the future of children of this great state, the removal of all race-based Native American imagery. There are other ways to honor Native American people and we should be able to say what honors us and what isn't an honor. We do not need out-of-state organizations dictating to us about what is best here for Michigan. And please take a look at the shirt that was worn here today by a guest. Today is a good example of the disrespect that has been shown to educational leadership here in Michigan. This board has a resolution against the use of Native American imagery, yet without disregard, your resolution is disrespected here in Lansing. Please keep Michigan moving forward for the children of Michigan, our future. Also, we'd like to thank the State Board of Education here in Michigan and the superintendent for doing what is right for all children and the students. And we'd like to thank you for your many years of support. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Jim Farrar is next, followed by El Nora Gavin.
That was quite a tornado drill. Not in Kansas anymore. My name's Jim Farrar. I'm from Myland. And also co-founder of the Michigan Coalition Against Racism in Sports and Media, as well as my sister Linda, who just spoke. And as you can see, I recently returned from Cleveland. We had their opening day last Tuesday. And you talk about traditions. This logo's been around since '45, changed to what it currently is now since '48. And the team name celebrated a 100th anniversary in 2015. So there are good traditions and bad traditions. We were there demonstrating and a lot of fans got arrested. But then again, when actual Native people show up to voice their concerns and disenfranchisement with this logo and name with a professional baseball team, we're spit on. And I won't go into all the other verbal abuse and hand gestures that you can imagine. Anyway, I'm here today to support and also to encourage our state superintendent and this board to move forward on this mascot issue and to seek financial discipline to these Michigan school districts who refuse to change and eliminate their Native American mascots, logos, nicknames, and their imagery. Always remember that in our everyday deliberations, you, each and every one of you here, the State Board of Education, myself, the Michigan Coalition, we must all consider the impact of our decisions or lack of decisions and how it impacts the next seven generations well beyond us. We're all known by the tracks that we leave behind. Children learn from what they see. They see these images, they see these mascots, they see how these communities react at local levels. And we need to set an example of truth and actions. Our lives are so short here on Mother Earth. It's like a flash from a firefly. Man does not weave the web of life. But we're all merely just a strand in that web. Whatever he or she does to that web does to him or herself. I pray for, I pray to the four winds for each and every one of you, for this board and for your understanding and wisdom and compassion to grow with kindness and peace and the strength to fully understand that the issue of why Native American mascots, logos, nicknames, imagery, et cetera, why they need to be eliminated in all of Michigan's schools. It's long past overdue. 2003, when this board passed that resolution and here we are 14 years later, still talking about this issue, still educating educators, still educating school boards. I'm not sure that hopefully in my lifetime I'll see all this stuff admonished and we can move forward into the 21st century without having race-based mascots throughout this entire country. It's not just here in Michigan. Ohio's got a whole lot of them, along with our professional sports teams. These local districts look to these professional sports teams as giving themselves legitimacy. Cleveland with their baseball, Washington NFL football team, the Chicago hockey team, the Atlanta baseball team. It's far time that this stuff is gone. And I just, again, I want to support and encourage this board, the state superintendent, and your legislative committee to move forward on this and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
El Nora Gavin is next, followed by our final speaker, Marletta Seets.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Winston and State Board of Education. Thank you for seeing me today. I am speaking on behalf of, just in regards to the Benton Harbor area schools closing as well as the other predominantly African-American schools who are consistently on the chopping block for closing. I'm speaking as a parent of a student at Benton Harbor area schools as well as a former student of Benton Harbor area schools. I graduated in 1994. So someone asked what happened 20 years ago, so that was about 22 years ago. I attended Magnet Schools, Gifted and Talented Academy, and McCora Renaissance Program, and I graduated from Benton Harbor High School. I went on to Howard University and I received a scholarship there, a partial scholarship for performing well there. I believe that the school trained me properly for college and prepared me properly for college. I think that back then is close to the time when possibly Proposition A or some other laws came down the pike that made some changes. It changed the way school districts were getting paid. I believe that Benton Harbor in particular has to make, take out loans in order to meet payroll and then the district is not being reimbursed for the interest on those loans. It's been a cash-strapped district. And it's also a district that is in an impoverished community. And as you saw today, there was a lot of evidence that indicated that it's that poverty and the finances that have a huge impact on student achievement. As a parent of a 16-year-old, I just want you to understand that he had to take his SATs last week. And I thought about the constant threats from the state of school closures. And I thought about the threat that we're under now with the partnership agreement stating that if we do not accomplish X amount of things, we may be taken over once again. And I thought about how I'm supposed to treat my 16-year-old who has to prepare for a state test. To constantly hear those types of threats, to constantly have those types of disruptions right before they have to take these tests has an impact on them and I think that it contributes to the learned helplessness. Over the years, I've seen superintendents, you know, being forced to close schools in the middle of the school year, rearrange teachers. I'm a former teacher. We had to literally, at the end of the year, when we were supposed to be preparing our students for final exams, we had to adhere to a turnaround program that required us to reapply for our jobs. Everyone was fired and then we had to prepare our portfolios and resumes as opposed to preparing our students. And so I just implore you to take a look at some of the distractions and the interruptions that are preventing our students from succeeding at very critical times. Not in the summertime, in the middle of the school year. All of the Magnet Schools that I attended, they have been closed. And so I just, you know, I just want you to consider if my student, my child, was getting ready for that SAT test in the morning and I say, you know what, you're a failure. You failed last year, you know, I'm going to kick you out, I'm tired of this, you know. And I distracted him right before that test as opposed to preparing him properly, nurturing him, finding out what's going on, how can I support you? That would have an impact on his progress. And I think that as, you know, as a district, that's having an impact on us as well. So as opposed to just saying, you know, if in 18 months you don't do this, we're going to close you. That has an impact on recruiting teachers and everything else and it has an impact on student achievement and how they feel about themselves. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Our final speaker, Marletta Seets.
Good afternoon. I am Marletta Seets and I'm not here representing the Benton Harbor School District as a trustee, although I am a new trustee on the Benton Harbor School Board. But that disclaimer is I'm here representing a resident of Benton Harbor, formerly with county commission for 12 years, with Robert Bosch Corporation for 32 years, and then another corporation in quality control. And since I've been on the board, it has been a true enlightenment. To look at education afar and to be right in the trenches of education is totally different than I believe what the public sees and what people read in the paper or hear on the news. I was listening as the commission brought forth their report and some of the recommendations they made concerning the individuals or the board sitting here. And it is the same response that all school boards are having. To eliminate people who are very vital and necessary to this system is not a good recommendation. And I do vote and I voted for school board members to be here. So I do not concur that at this time in the history of our state or our country that that would be something that we should even consider. And to go along with what Ms. Gavin had said and since me being new, originally grew up in Dewarjack, Michigan, and we had a tremendous educational system. I graduated in 1967, moved to the County of Barren in 1972. My son graduated from Benton Harbor High School in 1995. I've seen a tremendous change in how education is facilitated. A lot of the better teachers, I would say, not shortchanging anyone who's in the system now, are gone. And their method is also gone with those teachers. So the application and appropriation of the individuals that have retired, we don't see that now. We don't see the patience, we don't see the compassion that when I grew up, and then we don't see the discipline either, which is a good thing. So, but this partnership that we're embarking on and we have a few weeks or a few days in order to embrace that, I want to thank Superintendent Winston for asking our district to participate in that because we were formally in a consent agreement. And it's very important to understand that partnership also means relationship. And anytime you're in a relationship, there is mutual respect. And you get to learn each other in the relationship because when people first get into a relationship, a lot of times there's misconception. But in the time of getting to know each other, I believe that you'll find out that Benton Harbor District is sincere about the partnership. We do want to make our students some of the best students in our area. We do want to cooperate. We do want to exceed and excel the expectations of this board. And I just wanted to say to this board, please consider, I know I thought and being new, I might not have the data right, Ms. Gavin may. I first heard that 18% of our young people were in special ed. I heard yesterday that it's 32% and then more. If those scores are blended into the regular scores, under, from my world, is that fair? That those scores that are blended in from special ed into the regular testing scores? Does that hurt what, when you see it from this view? And how can we work on that if that is the representation of the scores? And we do have a lot of children who have been on medication. I know for a fact, since they were little and they're still on some forms of medication, and that is not helping. Our poverty level is not getting any better. We have a lot of situations. We have a high crime rate, which does look better. But in the onslaught of measuring Benton Harbor, those considerations, I hope Superintendent Winston has addressed some and this board will consider at the end of the 18-month period. If we have not totally achieved, please be considerate of us. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here. We're going to go back to top 10 and 10 presentation. So Sheila Alice, Chief Deputy Superintendent, is here with the monthly top 10 and 10 presentation. She's going to share how districts are implementing it and seeing some stories from local districts.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to continue our journey of sharing top 10 and 10 efforts in our state. You may remember that back in February of 2016, we embarked on a journey to make Michigan one of the top 10 education states within the next 10 years. In order to achieve that goal, a strategic plan was created. And that strategic plan includes seven strategic goals, which you see listed on this slide. You also have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation coming around for your reference. In addition to the seven goals that you see on this slide, there are also 44 strategies that have been created to support these goals. The strategic plan is the plan that is not just MDE's plan, but it is a plan that is supported and is being implemented throughout the state of Michigan. In order to organize those seven goals and 44 strategies, this Venn diagram was created. It has four focus areas and those four focus areas include the seven goals and the 44 strategies. The four focus areas are listed as learner-centered supports, effective education workforce, strategic partnerships, and then in the center, systemic infrastructure. So this is a graphic representation of the seven goals and 44 strategies. In looking at past presentations from about August on, the majority of presentations really focused on goal number seven, which is to develop an innovative and cohesive state education agency. That goal is represented-- That goal is represented in the center of the Venn diagram. It's the focus area called systemic infrastructure. So today, we're going to take a little bit of a different twist. Today, we're going to focus on the first six goals that are in our strategic plan, and we're going to focus on the other three areas in our graphic representation. And so today, we are going to highlight just a few of the many ISDs and districts and organizations throughout the state that have innovations or initiatives that they have implemented that are already part of our strategic plan. They represent just a few of the many practices that are in place in educational institutions and in organizations across our state. So we are going to take, similar to what Garden City did today, we are going to take a virtual field trip, focusing on one goal and strategy. I will share some demographic information about each of the sites that we're going to visit today, where they're located on the state map. I'll give a brief introduction to the innovation. I will show how, which focus area it supports. And then we're going to have a three-to-four-minute video that's been provided by the site. I would say this was the greatest challenge in putting this presentation together, which was to get our partner, educational partners, to limit the amount that they wanted to share with us to just three to four minutes, because they had really great things happening in their school districts or in their ISDs, and they had much to share. So with that introduction, we're going to begin our virtual field trip by starting with goal number one in the strategic plan, which is to provide each child with access to an aligned, highly quali, high-quality P-20 system from early childhood to post-secondary attainment. And for this goal, we're going to showcase the Elk Rapids School District and the International Baccalaureate Program that they have in both of their elementary schools and in their middle school, because it is a reflection of strategy 1.3 in our plan. So as you look at the demographic information about Elk Rapids, I just want to share one piece of information, and that is that they report that they have the first international baccalaureate world school in northern Michigan. In their video, we're going to hear about the many benefits of the IB program, including how students are becoming project-based learners through community projects, how they are learning to think more critically and deeply about the world around them as well as their education, and how the IB program is preparing students to take more AP classes at the high school level, and through the IB program that the teachers are feeling empowered to work as a unified team for the success of all students. The International Baccalaureate Program at the Elk Rapids Schools is an example of learner-centered supports. And so now, we're going to hear from Elk Rapids Schools.
Okay, we need sound.
Okay, I'm going to stop until we can get sound.
Ah, sounded loose, didn't it?
Okay.
Yes!
Our goal at Elk Rapids Schools is to provide a world-class education with a small-town field. Over the last four years, our efforts within the PYP have strengthened the delivery of state and national standards within our instruction, and also empowered our teachers to work as a unified team for the success for all students. At the foundation of everything we do in our school, it starts with the learner profile. Those are 10 character traits that we expect students to practice, not only as they come to our school each and every day and work within our classrooms, but also to put into place for the common good of our community at large. These things that are on my wall behind me are the landscape, are the framework of a foundation of a qualified, a quality student, but also a quality citizen as well, something that all of our staff here at Lakeland model each and every day.
IB helps me connect my classes. IB has helped me expand my view of the arts.
With both of our elementary buildings now being international baccalaureate schools, we feel as though we are in a fantastic position to really work the IB machine here at the middle school with the MYP, a portion of international baccalaureate. The PYP programs at both elementary schools are sending students to us who now understand the learner profile attributes, they understand the design cycle, and they understand what it takes to be project-based learners and to think more critically and deeply about the world around them and their education.
The IB framework has made me a better teacher, because I've allowed kids to branch out.
Being a student at Lakeland is practically the best thing I could ever imagine. It teaches me so much, how to be a good person.
So being in Elk Rapids has always been a lifelong dream, and coming back and being part of the IB program and these community projects and seeing the students collaborating with the community and getting out there and making a difference and thinking outside the box has been an amazing experience so far.
And more so today than ever before. We feel as though the work that we're doing with students has best prepared them to be successful at our high school across the street. We have amazing things happening at ERHS, and we feel as though the work that we're doing with our middle schoolers is putting them in a fantastic position to be highly successful with all of the AP classes that are offered there.
I'm Steve Preisel, and it's my pleasure to be the superintendent at Elk Rapids Schools. I would like to thank the Michigan Department of Education for recognizing us as an example school for helping Michigan become a top-10 state in 10 years. We are proud of all of our programs from early childhood through high school, in particular, our international baccalaureate program. It is an integral piece of our success. Lastly, I'd like to thank all of our staff. They are the best of the best.
And thank you to our friends in Elk Rapids. Moving on to goal number two, where the focus is on high-quality instruction in every classroom, the Eastern UP ISD and the Brimley Area Schools have engaged in a partnership to implement a multi-tiered system of support, otherwise known as MTSS, in reading and behavior. The MTSS initiative supports our strategy 2.2 in our strategic plan. So a few demographic pieces of information that I'd like to point out is that the Eastern UP ISD covers 4,000 square miles, and the Brimley Area Schools has a student population that is 55% economically disadvantaged, which means they're eligible for free and reduced lunch, and 52% are Native Americans. In their video, we're going to hear how the partnership between the Eastern UP ISD and the Brimley Area Schools facilitated the development of building leadership teams, and these teams are responsible for implementing effective educational innovations, monitoring fidelity of implementation, and collecting data on outcomes. In their video, we'll also hear how their collaborative and collective efforts have had a profoundly positive impact on student achievement, especially with their two subgroups of economically disadvantaged students and Native Americans. Focusing on the multi-tiered system of support, supports our learner-centered support focus area in our Venn diagram. So now, we'll hear from our friends in the Eastern UP ISD and Brimley Area Schools.
Welcome to Brimley, Michigan. Brimley is a small rural town located on the shores of Lake Superior in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. Brimley is a unique place in that it is a community characterized by economic challenges and high rates of poverty, but year after year, the children attending school in this community succeed at astonishingly high rates. 55% of the students enrolled at Brimley Area Schools are considered economically disadvantaged, but these children outperform state averages for economically disadvantaged students by enormous margins. In fact, these students perform so strongly that the rates of reading and math proficiency for economically disadvantaged students in Brimley are consistently on par with or better than those of their non-economically disadvantaged peers throughout the state. 52% of Brimley's student population is Native American, and not only do these students outperform their Native American peers throughout the state, but they actually outperform their white counterparts throughout the state as well. How is it that this small rural district is able to see unprecedented levels of achievement among impoverished and Native American students? Brimley Area School Superintendent Brian Riehtor credits the district's installation of multi-tiered systems of support in reading and behavior, the implementation of a consistent and effective teaming structure, and high expectations for all students.
The expectation at Brimley is that all students will achieve at high levels, no matter what their background or race may be.
Brimley entered a partnership with their intermediate school district to implement multi-tiered systems of support in 2011. They developed building-level teams to implement effective educational innovations, monitor fidelity of implementation, and collect data on outcomes. They made regular team meetings an embedded part of their school culture to ensure that implementation of effective innovations is sustained with fidelity. One of Brimley's biggest accomplishments is their implementation of a system of positive behavior interventions and supports, which is a research-based, proactive, and positive approach to teaching and enforcing behavioral expectations.
Since implementing PBIS, our referrals to the office have gone down considerably.
And perhaps the most remarkable thing about Brimley Area Schools, even after all of their successes, the staff still isn't satisfied. They always want to keep getting better.
We're not satisfied until 100% of our students are meeting their full potential.
So we're appreciative of our friends in the Eastern UP ISD and Brimley Area Schools for sharing their video with us. And we'll move on to goal number three. Goal number three focuses on high-quality, prepared, and collaborative education workforce. And so in this goal, we're going to showcase the Traverse Bay Area ISD, which has a strong partnership with their local districts to improve the quality of teaching. Their work supports strategy 3.1B in our strategic plan. A key piece of information about the Traverse Bay Area ISD is that they have five counties in their ISD. In this video, we are going to hear some key points that describe the examples of partnerships on quality teaching, the work that is being done to improve quality teaching, and the collaboration between superintendents and school administrators for the purpose of bringing more rigor into the classroom. The collaborative work that is occurring at the Traverse Bay Area ISD is supportive of the effective education workforce, which is the gold area of our Venn diagram. So now, we're going to hear from some of our friends in the Traverse Bay Area ISD, as well as the Kingsley Area Schools.
Well, we greatly appreciate the opportunity to share with the state board kind of some local examples of the work that you all are trying to do around goal three, which is developing, supporting, and sustaining high-quality, well-prepared, and collaborative workforce. We really feel like as an ISD, this has given us an opportunity to have those instructional, really, and leadership conversations against a given standard, which, you know, happens to be the Marzano framework.
At the local level, it's really provided the opportunity to push into a structure that was doing well for the most part, and, and really pull out the best features of it. We've done a lot of monitoring and a lot of just getting things concrete and set and formulated, what we wouldn't have been able to do without a little bit of help from the state.
I think another really exciting piece of the work that we're doing around high-quality instruction is the superintendent's rigor walks, and the fact that we have superintendents that are eager to open the doors within their own districts or to go visit other districts and to visit classrooms and collect data and have discussion around what they're observing.
Yeah, this year, we've had a handful, I mean, half-dozen meetings, and it was focused at the superintendents and building the competencies centered around Marzano. I think the first time we had folks come out to Kingsley, had a good group go through classrooms, we were able to have that conversation about what is effective teaching strategies. You know, we had a common framework to have that conversation. I love showing off the district following that. Another superintendent opened up his district, and we had a chance to get out to Glen Lake and see all the amazing stuff that they're doing. And again, work on helping superintendents be able to coach their principals relative to what's occurring in the classroom. I know that we've got some more of those set up. I think that's very unique, because most of the time, we don't open up buildings, let alone districts, to people.
During our last rigor walk that we, that we held with superintendents, we actually had a handful of building principals join us. And I really do think that this process is helping us get into that position where our superintendents are developing competency and really becoming comfortable interacting with principals around what, you know, the best evidence-based practice in the classroom looks like.
That's very important. I think two, two things to go with that. One, yeah, superintendents need to be comfortable to have that conversations with the principals, and certainly we're doing it at one level, but I know the ISD's working with the principals separately to just develop their competencies to work with teachers. Obviously, they need to be a little bit more honed in, working with, with the teachers in the classroom. So it's important that superintendents are very familiar and comfortable with it, but I know you guys are doing a lot more specific work.
You know, we really want to make sure that we have common understanding of what it looks like to be effective, and depending on what, you know, model of evaluation you're using, that, that language of what constitutes effective might be a little bit different. In our world with Marzano, that's ensuring that everything that we're doing is happening at, at a client level, where again, we have evidence to know that this puts us in the best position for student learning.
So thank you to our friends in the Traverse Bay Area ISD, as well as the Kingsley Area Schools. Moving on to goal number four, which emphasizes a reduction of high-risk factors such as poverty and the equitable distribution of resources to meet the needs of all students to ensure access to a quality educational opportunities. The balanced calendar at two of the elementary schools within the Warren Consolidated Schools supports strategy 4.2. The two elementary schools in which the balanced calendar has been implemented, both have between 50 and 60% of their student population that are eligible for free and reduced lunch. And in their video, we are going to hear some of the benefits of having a balanced school calendar, which includes the elimination of summer learning loss, an extension of classroom learning interventions and activities, an increase in student achievement, and positive feedback from student, staff, and the community. The implementation of a balanced calendar is an example of our learner-centered supports.
In the 2012-13 school year, our district-wide 21st Century Strategic Planning Committee began to conduct research on different learning environment options for students. This was in part due to what we began to see in students as a summer slide, which is the amount of information that students lose from being on summer break for so long. Our research led us to the eventual implementation of our year-round schools in August of 2013, and they have been met with huge success and very good feedback from our parents and community.
Students at balanced calendar schools attend the same number of days as traditional schools. However, rather than having six to eight weeks off during the summer, shorter breaks occur more frequently throughout the school year. During these two-week breaks, students are invited to attend intercession. Intercessions are additional instructional time. Teachers design lessons in core academic areas based on a central theme or topic. It's an extension of the classroom learning and provides opportunity for enrichment activities and intervention based on student need.
I think the intercessions really helped my son by giving him the time he needed in the classroom, extra time, and the activities weren't only fun and exciting, they helped him just do better in general.
They come back in August, the beginning of August. We don't have to spend as much time reviewing. We can kind of hit the ground running right from the get-go. When the students return, the teachers love that, because now they can kind of just pick up right where they left off.
She retains more during the summer break, with the shorter summer break. I don't think that she loses as much.
Over the last three years, we've showed huge gains, especially with last year's fifth graders, who began as third graders when Searsma switched over to, to the balanced calendar. And those students that were on the balanced calendar since third grade finished 9% above the state average in reading, and then nearly at- the state average in reading, and then nearly at state levels, only 3% below in math. We were averaging, when we were on the traditional calendar, 20 to 30% below state average when we were on that calendar. So, over the time, you know, they've made huge gains in that area, now being 9% above in ELA and only 3% below in math.
Above all, Warren Consolidated Schools remains committed to this balanced calendar option, largely due to the achievement gains we've seen in students, as well as the positive feedback we've received from students, parents, and the community at large. Just another example of the fine work that's been produced through our 21st Century District Wide Strategic Plan.
So, thank you to our friends at WarrenCon for the video that they sent us. Moving on to goal number five, which emphasizes parents and guardians as engaged and supported partners in their child's education. The work of the Michigan PTA embodies Strategy 5.5 in our strategic plan. The Michigan PTA has almost 40,000 members, and next year, will celebrate its 100th birthday. In this video, we will hear from the Michigan PTA president on the importance of parent involvement and engagement as one of the key components of student success, and will be highlighted, and will highlight, the six standards that are, were established by the National PTA for School and Family Partnership. And the Michigan PTA work certainly supports our strategic partnership focus in our strategic plan. So here is the PTA, Michigan PTA president.
Hello, I'm Ruth Angie Quack, President of the Michigan PTA. Decades of research show us that students with engaged parents are more likely to attend school regularly, perform better in school, and go on to post-secondary education. Families are children's first and most important teachers, advocates, and nurturers. Strong family engagement is not supplemental, but essential in promoting children's healthy development and preparing them for school success. A robust family engagement is a key component in making Michigan a top-10 education state in 10 years. Michigan PTA believes empowering parents and families, making them true partners in their children's education. PTA has developed many high-quality resources to assist parents and schools to develop and effectively implement family engagement practices. National PTA has developed six standards for school-family partnerships. Number one, fostering school environment that is welcoming to all families. Families today are very diverse, and families of all types must be valued and welcomed into the school community. PTA's Bring Your Family to School Week is a great way to welcome families into your school. Number two, offer effective, meaningful, two-way communication, whether it's planning an effective parent-teacher conference, understanding the math curriculum, or making sense out of test scores. Number three, supporting student success. Families and school staff continuously collaborate to support students' learning and healthy development, both at home and at school. Number four, speaking out for every child. Families are empowered to advocate not only for their child, but for all children. Number five, sharing power. Families and school staff are equal partners in the decisions that affect children and families. And number six, collaborating with the community. Families and school staff communicate, collaborate with the community members to connect students, family, and staff with expanded learning opportunities, community service, and civic engagement. These standards should be included in all family engagement policies. For 120 years, PTA has been a voice for children across this nation. PTA is the oldest and largest child advocacy group with over 4 million members nationally and 50,000 members here in Michigan. PTA is a proud stakeholder in the Michigan Department of Education's ESSA Plan and supports the inclusion of family engagement in the 10-10 Plan. For more information on family engagement, I encourage you to visit our website at michiganpta.org.
Thank you so much for the video. And moving on to goal six. Goal six stresses the strong partnerships that need to be available to ensure that Michigan has a prepared and quality future workforce. And for this goal, we're going to focus on the Meridian Public Schools and their early college high school, which supports Strategy 6.6. Of the 1,300 students that attend Meridian Public Schools, 45% of them are eligible for free and reduced lunch. In today's presentation, we are going to hear of the numerous benefits of having a early middle college in the high school. That includes that students are expected to earn a minimum of 15 college credits, that they will be eligible for up to five years of high school, and that students are scheduled into college classes as soon as they demonstrate that they are ready. And the implementation of an early college high school certainly supports our Lerner-centered supports in our strategic plan.
So, five years ago, our Board of Education was asking school administrators to think about creative ways to help our student body be more successful after high school. We, as a school community, recognized that it was not enough just to get a high school diploma.
You know, you're a 16-year-old kid going to college. It kind of hits you when you get there. It's like, wow, all these kids have already graduated high school, and they're pursuing something with their life. But that experience isn't something that you just want to give back. If I had the option to do something different, I wouldn't, because it kind of, it shows you that age isn't as big of a deal when it comes to education. And I learned a lot there in almost the same regard that I did at Meridian.
We were a relatively successful high school, in that we were graduating over 90% of our students, and 3/4 of those students were going to college. But it was alarming that only 1/3 of our students ever completed their first year, according to state data. And so, the question was raised if our goal is to prepare students for life after high school, and if we believe that in order to earn a good wage in today's economy, our students have to have some kind of post-secondary education, shouldn't we be doing more to help these students be successful after high school?
This early college movement for us has definitely helped our college-going population, but I think as a school, it's really helped all of our students to help them find their path. Think that they used to be left out, we didn't take the time that we should with them. And there's so many programs to offer, whether it be certificated, or associates, or, you know, gen ed credits that they're going to take on to a university. We try to meet all of those paths.
Going to college that first year and taking those prerequisite courses for free, that's an amazing opportunity. Like, you're knocking all that out of the way, you have some time to kind of explore, like, career options, and maybe what you want to do. And I think it's like a character building also, because you get to mature that year with people that you have grown up with and known for a long time before you're kind of thrown out into the deep end of big college. And I just think, I really believe that this is a really beneficial system that we have in place here.
We require college credits for graduation for 100% of our students. We will not always meet that goal for all of our students, but we are in that just as deeply as our students and our families are now. We want to be accountable to that goal. And I think that that accountability and that commitment by our staff has really shifted the culture of this school.
So, thank you for this opportunity today to share with you a few of the many, many ISDs and districts and organizations across our state that are implementing innovations and initiatives that are supportive of our strategic plan. These are just a few of the many great things that are happening across our state to support our strategic plan to make Michigan one of the top-10 education states in the next 10 years. And I want to thank the people on the slide for accepting my invitation, when I called them and spoke with them, to send a videotape to share with us their efforts in their school district, their ISDs, and their organizations. And a special thank you to Mike Flamignio and our Communications Department for helping me with my technical assistance in putting the slideshow together. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Do we have any questions? Nikki, and then Eileen?
It's pretty neat to see what Meridian is doing. That was a good video. Was it a student that put that together? Or was it the school?
I believe it was the students who put it together.
That's very cool. I just had a quick question. Last month, we talked about when top 10 in 10 was, the presentation was given, last month, we talked about empowering educators through updating the certification requirements enforced by accreditation, and adding that to the implementation curve. Did we get anywhere on that, do you know?
I don't know, but I will find out for you.
Okay, because this is, I mean, not very consistent with what we talked about last month, so I just want to make sure we're staying on that note. And then, we talked about collective research to transform that certification, so I just wanted to add that back to our plate. Can we figure out what the Board would have to do to be a part of that for the next month?
Sure.
Is that possible? Yeah. And then, from the slideshow, I'm just curious, what specific work is being done on Goal Three? It talks about ensuring a focus on high-quality instructional practice and instructional leadership. That's kind of also back to what we talked about last month, but what specific work is being done? I know that Traverse City Bay Area had a nice video, but no specifics were offered in the video in terms of what they're doing to focus on high-quality instructional practice.
So, do you want to know what Traverse Bay Area ISD is doing, or what in general is occurring?
What in general is occurring within that goal and that strategy.
Okay.
Get your report on that? Eileen, please.
Well, I hate to put you down after a great presentation. I actually wanted to just ask, what we're doing on the best practices clearinghouse that you were mentioning earlier? And for these schools, as we come up with such a great list of initiatives, particularly in MTSS, because that is the backbone of the top 10 in 10 ideas, whether we can find a way to track their M-step scores, and eventually, their final scores for the SAT?
Yes.
The reason being that, one of the concerns everybody's voiced is how does assessment work with quality instruction? And it's just a, I see Dr. Kiesler over there, but I'm curious to see whether, there's always the sense that a test is a snapshot on any one given day, and we understand that, but if there is fidelity to the model throughout K-12, and there's no way to tell from this what, how strong that is right now, because it was just a segment of, for example, the first presentation was K-8.
Yes.
Because they haven't gone into high school yet. But as we see these initiatives trying to match their success up with what we hope will get us there, it seems to me to be an important step.
So, in response to your question about scores and MTSS, that is part of what we will be monitoring as we move forward with the implementation, scaling up the implementation of MTSS with our ISDs. We will be using their, both the M-step scores, as well as their district assessments, to monitor the fidelity of the implementation.
So, the only reason I'm asking this is because we had two presentations today that I'm not sure are in our system. In other words, you're not helping them, they've already moved far ahead. One was the school district, this morning, Garden City Schools. I don't know if that's district-wide or only at the one school, but also the second school here, this district, which is Brimley. And so, if there's a way to start tracking, not so much tracking, but seeing how that plays out in assessment now, I think it would really harden other districts that are taking a look at it, because it would provide concrete evidence, one way or the other, that, yes, this will pay off for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll get your update on that. Anybody else? All right, we'll get your updates on those questions. Thank you very much. Approval of State Board of Education minutes? I'm sorry?
So moved.
Oh, I like it, boy. Any questions?
Yes, I made a slight change to something that, to one point on the ISD discussion, asked for the inclusion of a phrase.
Yep, all right. With that correction, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approval, the minutes of the closed session, March 14th?
So moved.
Supported. And then, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Reporter, close, presidents, please.
I appreciated the presentations that we had today, and the opportunity to respond to several of them. Maybe it's because by the 15th time, things start to sink in, but I found the map here of the top 10 in 10 to be, I find myself with, I think, the clearest picture of how these things fit together in a while, so I appreciate that. There's been some talk among members of the Board of forming a subcommittee specifically to explore urban education, and what kinds of things will be helpful there. On the other hand, we do need to come clear on our, what the Open Meetings Act allows us to do, and I think we all need that clarification, so. Another matter is, deeply appreciate the, what am I saying? All the things that you do, Mr. Superintendent, here, I find you very responsive to our inquiries, and I appreciate that very much, and you also have a very busy schedule as you supply in your reports, and I know that takes a very competent staff, and we appreciate their support of you and your job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Cassandra?
So, just a couple items. Michelle and I attended the Communities and Schools Dinner on March 21st, and I know some members of the staff attended as well. It was a really nice event, and honored a couple of supporters of public education, so that was a very nice treat. I also just want to put back on the radar screen, we had talked about when we did the superintendent's evaluation, that we talked about perhaps taking a look at the tool that we use to evaluate the superintendent, and maybe updating that a little bit. So, I would ask that if anyone is interested in working on that, to let me know, and we can pull someone, some whole group together to kind of take a more in-depth look at that. So if you could let me know, maybe by next month, that would be great. And tomorrow, I have the honor of keynoting the address at the Macomb ISD Teacher of the Year Awards. I understand Judy's not here at the moment, but I think they are honoring 63 wonderful teachers. So, I'm really excited to spend the evening with them and their families, and recognizing great teaching that's happening in Macomb County. And then, finally, just to pick up on what Richard said, I know Tom and Michelle and some others have talked about looking specifically at urban education, and coming up with maybe some best practices, or some recommendations. And so, while I- And so, while I don't think we need to talk about a formal committee at this time, I would suggest that as a board, that we charge Tom and Michelle maybe to come together and put together a plan of what that might look like and bring it back to a future board meeting or our retreat in May, so that we can decide as a group if that's the way we want to go and what that would look like. So, that would be my recommendation. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Terms of superintendent's report, the Michigan College Access Network presented Vanessa Kiesler with her Compass Award advocating for attainment of college credit. Recipients of this award have launched or championed bold proposals that focus on increasing Michigan's post-secondary attainment rates, so congratulations to Vanessa. Partnership agreements, I have been, Vanessa, I and Vanessa's team have been traveling the state two or three different times to the 10 different districts that were engaging the conversations on the partnership agreements. We do believe we're going to begin knocking those out and signing them later this week and going into next week. Probably nine out of the 10, I'm pretty confident that we'll get a partnership agreement, the one we may not, deals with a Central Michigan University Charter School, and they're going through a process of closing that charter school. So, that's part of the discussion and what Central's plans are with that school certainly would impact whether we'd have a partnership agreement with them or not. CTE work groups, the Governor has asked myself and another department head to Roger Curtis from Michigan Department of Talent and Economic Development to look at making some recommendations on CTE. So, we've been inviting school districts and business community and the unions to come in and talk about what's working out there, what are roadblocks, and if they could start with kind of a blank sheet of paper, what they would do on CTE. And we're working on developing a report, and we'll be sharing that with you in the near future. One of the exciting things that I get to do is school visits, and I have visited St. Charles, Meridian, Beddix, Ugly, Flat Rock and Airport since we last met. And one of the things that I'm really enjoying is, it's funny how this has taken off, but I go there and they start with top 10 and 10 and how they're aligned to it. So, we are getting traction out there in terms of wanting to see change and aligning it to top 10 and 10, and so that's very exciting. And these are school districts that, you know, range from very small to very large, so very exciting. So, I appreciate the opportunity to do that. With that, reported Teacher of the Year, Tracy, please.
One of my more recent school visits, you'll see the photo up there of students laying under the table aligning with top 10 and 10. They are pretending to create like Michelangelo. And...
Oh, very cool idea.
So, at first glance, and you might be wondering, what are they doing under the table? But of course, being creative. And then, the other students at the wash tub full of sudsy water were talking about how they were all kings and princesses and how many teeth they're missing and how important it is to brush their teeth and to wash the dishes and teaching us how to do those things. And Kalisa Wing, whose picture here is the DODA, the Department of Defense Education Activities Teacher of the Year, who I met at our initial convening of the State Teachers of the Year around the country. And what I was realizing was that many of the activities that we engaged in at this very serious, very formal, rigorous conference, that really what we were doing was playing, just like these students were, that many of the things they were doing were similar to what we were. So, while they were titled things like Policy 101, Storytelling is Best Practice, Media Training, Integrating Digital Museum Resources Into Your Classroom, Leading for Equity, et cetera, what it was really doing was getting us to engage more by talking and thinking together in playful processes, so that our presenters could observe us, listen to us and know how to support our thinking, which is really similar to some of those transformational processes that really influence thinking in the classroom. Storytelling, of course, being a speech part of that. And here are some of the students from Mark Murray Elementary in Detroit. And we read Bubble Gum, Bubble Gum, and they loved it, so they were very thankful for that gift. And we also visited Go Lightly Elementary in Detroit Public Schools Community District. So, those are some of the first graders there. So, being able to see the different cultures and engagement levels of the students throughout our visit that day, just it kept taking me back to the experiences that I had as an adult learner and just really reminded me of the importance of play. And Christine Maraz is the author of a book called Purposeful Play. And she presented to us this last summer at a conference that I was at called Learn, Motivate, Focus, and she whispered to us that "Play is a four-letter word for rigor." And it really is just about that, those engagement processes and observing the learners throughout that and collecting data around what they're doing, that formative assessment processes really most powerful when we're able to take a step back and watch what they do and know how to speak into where they need to go next to influence their growth. And that is all I have for today. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Tracy. Next item on the regular agenda is discussion on Michigan Every Student Succeeds Act Plan and Transparency Dashboard for School Accountability. At the March State Board Meeting, Board of Education Meeting, there was discussion and action regarding the Transparency Dashboard for School Accountability as it relates to Michigan's Plan for Every Student Succeeds Act. Board members wanted to make sure the dashboard is easily understood by parents and community members seeking information about their local schools. This is the Board's opportunity for further discussion on that topic and to share with us how you would like us to move forward with the dashboard, some of the concepts you would like to see. So, Vanessa is going to do a quick update on ESSA, and then we'll have the conversation on dashboard.
You all, good afternoon. You all have your packets, and so, let me, I don't need those. Can I have one of those, please? Let me just, wanted to walk you through what's in the packet. Do, like the superintendent said, a very short update on what's in here. I know you've seen the plan. I think you're fairly well, there's been a lot in Board Briefs, so we're fairly well aware of what went in, but really trying to focus our efforts on the dashboard and what you'd like to see there. So, in your packet, you have the dashboard, which is where we'll talk about today. You have our overview, and our overview is the best summary of, thank you, the best summary of what's in the plan, what ultimately went in. So, just walking you through it very quickly, supports for schools and students, that didn't change at all related to public comment, so still focusing on whole child, focusing on differentiated supports, targeted to the needs identified by districts, more flexibility, integration of early childhood, supports for special populations, consulting with the 12 tribal nations, so that is all very similar to what you heard. Educator quality, again, not a lot changed coming out of there, a lot of positive comments on this. Just a note for any of you who might be doing advocacy on the federal level, this is all Title II-related work, and Title II is something that has been signaled that may be in danger in the future budget discussions. So, we, that would be really bad for Michigan to lose those investments into our educator workforce, which we can't do any of this 10 and 10 work without a workforce that's supported and trained and valued. So, if you have federal outreach ways of doing things, that message that Michigan values Title II and values our educators and hopes you keep this funding stream is important to share. Focusing, educator quality focuses really on those, the partnerships between LEAs, districts and educator programs, particularly our partnership districts. As we go through these partnership meetings, we, almost every district does talk about, almost every partnership district talks about something with regard to their workforce and talent management. Sometimes it's recruiting, sometimes it's retaining, sometimes it's incentivizing, it depends on the district. So, we want to support those transitions. We want to focus on induction and mentoring, professional learning, particularly around the key areas of the 10 and 10 strategies. And then, career pathways for teacher, teacher leadership networks and principal mentorship networks, so that's some of what is in there around educators. Accountability-wise, this is where I just want to walk through what we ultimately submitted, because this is probably the piece that had the most movement based on public comment. So, as you know, and this is all in your overview, there's no PowerPoint for this. You have been Powerpointed to death by me on this topic, so I thought I'd spare you one more PowerPoint and myself. So, big debate, big discussion. We built the A to F system as we promised that we would over a year ago, brought that forward. And there's really three, as you all have heard, there's three kind of versions or degrees of summation, is how I would say it. So, the original A to F system that sums all the way up, shorthand that for Option 1. Option 2 is an A to F system that does not sum up, so there's grades in the core components, but no overall grade, that's Option 2. And then, Option 3, which we'll spend some time on today, a dashboard accountability system, so a combination of those six indicators from the A to F plus the dashboard, the transparency dashboard, and indicating, and this is in the plan as well, that we represented your support for that option in the plan as well as in this overview document based on the resolution you passed. And this is why we need to spend some time on this today. So, to replace our current system, top to bottom and scorecard, we need to have a new system. If we don't know what we're replacing it with, we can't replace it. So, we need the legislature to act by June. We also need to, if they do, that gives us an answer in that sense. At the same time, you've expressed interest in wanting to further develop this dashboard, so we do need to get your input and get your feedback. I think the dashboard can be thought of as a rolling process. We need to lock down what we're going to do for next year by this June, but we can always add in the future or make modifications. But again, to transition for next year, we need to know what it is. So, looking to work with you. And then, we'll keep developing the key indicators, because we're, you know, it, rolling out a new system takes a lot of time and a lot of work, so we want to keep the process moving while we continue the discussion. So, we know that the six key indicators, proficiency, growth, grad rate, English learner progress, school quality and participation are important regardless of presentation, so we can keep working on that development, looking to get that up by, or get it, something up by the next accountability cycle. Then, there's a lot of text about, and we have to go through, this is the part that will be fun for you, US Ed to read too. Some of these things only pertain to one of the options, some pertain to different options. So, for instance, weighting only matters if you have a summative rating. You don't, weighting doesn't matter if you don't sum up. So, we're on page 17 now of the, of the report. The projected distribution only is relevant if you have a final grade. So, then, so pages 19, 20 and 21 show the three options, and like I said, after I get done with this overview, that's where we'll center our discussion today. Transparency dashboard will be important regardless of how we present it. We do still need to have, based on whatever, one of these accountability systems, we need to figure out how we would find the lowest performing schools and how we would find schools with large gaps or underperforming subgroups. So, that's two conversations. One, once we settle on an accountability system, how do you use that to find the lowest performing schools? And then, two, on the subgroups and gaps, that's a real conversation about equity in the state, that before we build the right metric, we have to know what equity would look like and how we would want to measure it and how we would want to deal with it. So, we can build all kinds of metrics, but if we don't have an agreement at a policy level at a state about what kind of gap matters, which gaps are we looking at? How do we want to look at them? So, look forward to engaging in that conversation with stakeholders in the next coming months. We have about a year to figure that metric out before US Ed would be looking for us to use it. But as you heard from the 10 and 10 and different, different presentations, you know, outside of the feds, Michigan does have achievement gaps. We have pretty systemic achievement gaps, and if we want to get where we're trying to go, if we want to really think about learning and learners for all of our students, we have to get into this. What do we, where are we not getting to the kids who we need to get to? How do we find that? And then, what do we do? So, those are conversations that are coming, and in the plan, we just said we are still talking, and we also want to settle on our overall accountability, so we can derive from there as well as align it with a state vision for this work. And then, finally, with assessment, nothing changed on assessment between, before public comment and now, so the overview is as it was before. Required fall benchmark, optional winter assessment, required spring comprehensive benchmark, looking to integrate writing and problem-solving and teamwork, still looking at options for that, requiring the PSAT 8, 9 in eighth grade as the eighth grade content test, and then the high school as it is now. So, PSAT in ninth grade, 10th grade, and then SAT and M-Step in 11th grade. And we are moving to get the RFP done to work on that. The last thing you have in your packet is a summary of all of our stakeholder engagement, and I know we provided you in Board Briefs as well, the full text of all the comments that you, that we received during public comment. So, the Board Brief, really nice job by Alessandra and the team, I think, not the Board Brief, the stakeholder engagement brief in summarizing, and I think if you took a moment to read it, you see that there is just a lot of interesting and diverse viewpoints on all of these topics. So, a lot of positive feedback, you know, concerns, much of which we talked about at the Board Table. And then, you had the full text comments, so you can see more in, in greater detail what people said during public comment. So, with that...
So, just to sum up, in terms of what you saw previously and what was filed, so the only really major change was to put in the Board's comments on the...
That that's the default.
That that's the default, if nothing passes by June.
Right.
So, other than that, there was cleanup language, Alessandra, there was cleanup language, there was...
We moved to the new templates.
And we moved to a new template, so it might look a little different, because they changed templates on us, but really, it is the same except for that, what the Board asked us to change. Pam, did you have something?
Yep, just a couple of questions without going through this. Were you able to go to Detroit and do a session with them? Were they able to give input?
Yeah, they came in and talked with, Alessandra handled this one, but, yep.
Okay. Okay. And then, I guess, I don't know if I heard this or not, but are we still waiting for the, has the Governor approved?
The Governor, we did send you his letter yesterday, I think, in your, in an email. He signed it. He said we met our requirements of providing him the opportunity to review and to give input. He did cite two things that he would like to have continuing conversations on. One is the N-size for special ed, and the other is his support for an A through F concept. Other than that, he did, he signed the document as-is.
So, it's...
It's submitted.
It is submitted.
Yep, we filed it. Yep, we filed it.
So, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's all right, we just sent it late yesterday, so...
Okay. And then, so then, January, or June 30th, that's just the legislators acting on the accountability?
We're saying we need by the end of June 30th, a direction from either the legislature or the Board, so that we may build the accountability system.
What about that?
Lupe, and then over here?
Now, do I understand this correctly? It's a living document?
Yes.
We can add to it.
Yes, it's a living document.
Living, breathing.
I mean, if there's something major that, like, say, the legislature passed a law that we needed to update, we would update immediately, you know, that kind of thing. We have the opportunity to do that. I think, did Dicey, Cassandra, and then Nikki?
Regarding the N-size, I was just, I'm curious, because I know there, at some level, you get low enough where FERPA can become an issue, right? Because you could dissect, I mean, if we're only talking about a handful of students, it's pretty easy to dissect who's, who's scoring what. So, what is that magic number that you, you really need to be above?
10. And that's why our reporting N-size is 10. That's the minimum.
So, right now, we report to school districts...
At 10.
...how their special ed subgroup performs if there's 10 or more kids.
Or any subgroup.
Right.
Any number, we show it if there's 10 or more kids. But even if you had a school with only nine students, you wouldn't even have a number show up in your all-student subgroup, like, on assessment or graduation rate or counts, head counts. But 10 is the kind of FERPA-approved lower bound of reporting while preserving...
So, the feds have said 10 is the limit?
That's a good question, if the feds have said, or if it is what we, because every state interprets FERPA, there's a, there's federal law and then state interpretation of federal law, as you would imagine. We have consistently held to a 10 N-size as the lowest reporting for any, and that's us, that's SEPI, that's kind of...
Okay, because even 10 just seems, to me, like, if I really wanted to, I could dissect 10 students and figure it out.
Nikki, then, Michelle and Tom?
And more on subsize, or subgroups, and we've talked a little bit back and forth in email about this. I just want to make sure it's out in the open and everyone understands why. So, the subsized group to report is a different number if they choose... So, so the subsized group to report is a different number if they choose the transparency dashboard versus if they have an A to F system, is that correct?
Well, yeah, so again, this is where having three potential options floating around makes it very hard to answer questions. So the accountability end size, there's two types of end sizes. There's the accountability end size, the point at which it triggers in the accountability system that meeting or missing the target can affect your grade. And then there is the reporting end size, and this goes back lots of years. So we have, since we started reporting data publicly, reported, let's just take assessment results, reported your assessment results if there's 10 or more at any subgroup, period. When it came time, thinking back to AYP, to say you passed or failed, you had to have 30 to have us count the pass or fail, to say, yes, you met it, yes, you didn't. So if you had 20, we'd still report it, you'd still see the kids, but you wouldn't be held accountable on that subgroup. In terms of our context now, if we're not assigning a label, either an option one or option two, there's no accountable subgroup. It's not the same point at which we'd say you met or didn't meet the target. We would just be reporting percent of kids who did the thing, who were whatever the thing is, graduated.
So if we went with this option, then it doesn't matter.
There is no, there's no accountable end size in this option, because it's just reporting. We're not making judgments about you did, you didn't.
But if you had a report card that either summed up to a grade or had individual grades on the categories, then that comes into play.
Yeah.
Technically, though, our special ed students either take, they have appropriate accommodations, or they take alternate assessments like we talked about.
Yep.
Why would we not be accountable to them, regardless?
Well, we'd report it.
Sorry, yeah, I guess I don't...
We'd report it, if you had 10 special ed kids, we would say on this dashboard, your subgroup of special ed, this is how they perform. So we'd report it, but there's nothing in here that says, you know, in a report card, you get A through F, and let's say you got an A, but because of your subgroup performance, theoretically, you could bump that down to a B, because your special ed subgroup performance or some subgroup performance didn't perform well, so you'd go from an A to a B. But if you're not grading schools, all you're doing is reporting how the various groups did, there's no consequence, so it doesn't come into play. Is that the answer?
I have to believe that if we're going to set up an accountability system, whether it's this dashboard or it's A to F, that there would be a consequence on some level that we're accountable to for special needs. And if we're giving them assessments that are alternative, or, I mean, how would we then guide the accommodations that they need? So that really, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm kind of being a pain, but I also feel like there's a big inconsistency here.
And I think you're calling out an implication of a dashboard. At least the conversation at this table has been around who are we to say how much is enough? So the concept in this dashboard is that we don't make a judgment on the number. We present the number with maybe some contextual numbers, but we don't say that's too much, that's enough, that's not good enough. We just don't say it. We leave that judgment to parents, we leave that judgment to schools. Nikki, I think you're calling out one of the fundamental challenges with that, is that, how do you understand how enough is enough? How do we do goal setting? How do we understand where performance isn't getting there? That is a challenge with a dashboard without some sort of label, whether it's an A or a plus or a thumbs up or a color. This doesn't have any judgment in it. It just says, here it is. So to your point, if we say 30% of special ed students graduated, and the state average was 50, arguably, someone could look at that and say, well, that's under the average, that's bad. But someone could also look at it and say, well, what should it be? Is that, I don't, I don't know how to make sense of that number. And also, how much should we improve it to be better? Should we improve it to 50? Should we improve it to 100? You're right that this dashboard doesn't have that same targets, and it doesn't have that same judgment about missing or meeting a target, because it's not set up that way. It's set up as information.
I guess the other thing, too, from, which we talked about last month, and I, and it's now coming back to me, is the idea that reported, is there a consequence, a funding consequence or a resource consequence for those of special needs if they're not reported? And I think you remember, I remember you saying, I don't know. So when we think about accountability systems and having decided that the end size is bigger for this and smaller for this, do we have down the line thinking of how this is going to impact the resources if we don't report these students and they get lost?
So again, every student, every student, period, but let's take students with disabilities. Every student with disabilities is reported into our student data system. Every student who's labeled as having, or is tagged as students with disabilities is expected to have an IEP, and in there is expected to have appropriate accommodations, appropriate tests, appropriate, all of those things. That happens regardless, and that happens, like the Office of Special Education works with non-public data in districts to make sure that, so if there's one special ed student in a school, they're still expected to do that, and the Office of Special Ed would know that student and would work with them. You couldn't find that student on a public dashboard. You'd have to be logged in. So every student is in the system, every student has those expectations. I think the question you're asking is, if we say it's 10 or whatever, if, if people aren't paying attention to their special ed subgroup, is that what you're asking? Like if we're not calling attention to where things are or are not happening?
Yes, will have an impact on the resources that they get. So for example, for funding based on the accountability built into a system like this or, or like A to F, and they're not included.
So let me clarify on that. Funding is not related, not, has not been, is not proposed to be related to accountability. Funding in this state is based off of FTE, so that core student data system, reporting in there, your enrollment, your head count, and your FTE number goes into formula calculations for funding. It doesn't, you could be a failing school, you could be a succeeding school, you could be doing it right, you could be doing it wrong. We don't have performance-based funding here, for a special ed or for general ed funding. It's formula-based. So, does that help?
Okay, Michelle, please.
That could be the dead horse. So I was gonna also follow up on that, just so I understand. So, so we are using a 10 end size?
For reporting.
For reporting.
For reporting, and even now, under the ESA plan, we're using the 10 end size.
Previous, under previous system, under No Child Left Behind and under ESA, 10 as for reporting, yes.
Okay, so the governor is, my understanding is from lieutenant governor as well, that their concerns with what we're doing are that we are not, we're using large of an end size, but I'm confused if we're using 10.
The, so again, there's the accountable end size, the reporting end size. Reporting end size remains 10, no matter whether it's option one, two, or three. It's the accountable end size. And on the accountable end size, we said 30, with the exception of the English learner progress group, which I can talk more about.
Right.
And the governor has flagged a question with 30 as the accountable end size, wanting it to be lower. So no one's really questioning the reporting 10 end size, that's fine, you know, it's kind of, that, that's not the part. It's the accountable end size, which is only relevant in option one or two, or some other option that someone might come up with and pass through legislation. Not us, we will not come up with any more options. We have all the options.
Yeah, I think the concern, as I understand it, is what you stated and Nikki supported, is, you know, how do we make, you know, how do we make these students to be, their future to be a priority, not just going to college, although some will, but for some kids who might not even be able to get a degree, but only get a certificate of completion, how can we make their lives more meaningful? How can we make them more likely to have jobs? And how can that be built in? And, you know, I said it earlier, because the system, when it's become so test-driven accountability, is baked in a disincentive to even want to have these types of children in your school. And they become very expensive, because they're under, we're underfunded. So is there any way to counterbalance that disincentive? And, and maybe, you know, the end size, I think, is one way that's sort of getting at that subject, but perhaps if we looked at, when we talk about the, this dashboard, you know, we looked at, you know, other things like how well they are transitioning special ed students to careers or to other post-secondary options.
That's what we want to hear from you, yep.
Right. So I'm, I'm wondering if there's some way, so we can have some ongoing discussion around this to maybe, so maybe end size is one thing that you can argue about, but I think the ultimate goal is to make sure that there's really good outcomes.
Right.
Maybe there's a way to do that through the dashboard system.
Yeah. And that's what, like the superintendent just said, that's really where I hope we can spend the bulk of our time today and then figure out how we continue the conversation, because it, we think you have a lot of insight and goals for the dashboard, but we need to get that from you and get that in some way that we can build it and have agreement from you as well. We don't want to build a dashboard that you like and you don't, and, you know, then we still haven't achieved our goal of a consensus system that helps move forward, so, yes.
But we do need to be able to track to see if there are schools that are struggling or schools that are...
Yeah, and this will tell us, even the dashboard tells us that. Because what we'll do is, what we would propose to do is to say, here's how the school's doing, and here's how they do compared to the state, and here's how they compare to a light district, so that we see that. Tom?
Okay, so are we doing both the ESA plan questions and also the transparency dashboard right now?
Sure.
So suggestions for the dashboard? And you said now is the chance for the board?
Well, between now and the end of June.
Okay, good.
Not just today.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to...
You've got 30 seconds.
So, so good. So I mean, in that case, yeah, I mean, I, I hope that we can...
We'll spend time at the retreat more in depth.
Good, okay, great. And so we can be looking for others to give us input. I mean, we really want the public to give us input on what they would like to see. I mean, that was one of our arguments, was to give meaningful, objective information to parents, so that they can make decisions and, and know what's going on at their schools. I mean, I would suggest, and I know Michelle's talked about class size, I think it's more of a, that, I'm fine with that, it's more of a proxy for how much gets to the class as opposed to overhead. So I'm, either...
Instructional expenditures?
Republicans used to talk about 65 cents to the classroom, 65 cents to the classroom or something, maybe it was more than Republicans.
No, that's, well, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it was bipartisan, but class size would work as well. So something that says, you know, I, you know, that it, how much of it, and the numbers, I, from what I recall, you could play around with that, how it's calculated. So I'd like to really have some way to identify who's getting it right to the classroom, and basically, who's spending a ton on overhead and...
Right. The one problem with the 65%, if you have a senior staff averaging 25 years, you're going to look like you're spending a lot in the classroom. And if you have a district that has a lot of teachers at the 10-year mark, you're going to look like you're not spending much in the classroom, but that's not a fair comparison. That's the problem with the 65%.
Yeah, all right. So then maybe the class size is a better... I have, we, we emailed back and, or, yeah, emailed back and forth about, I really would like to see a student satisfaction or parents, or parent satisfaction.
Is that on here?
Climate student surveys?
Well, you...
Student, parents, and teachers, yep.
Okay, but you had said that it's, we'd run into Headley. I, I think that we should be able to pay for it. I mean, that would be something I'd go to the legislature, and I think if we wanted to do it, we could sell it to the legislature.
Well, I think we can design it both ways. We can make it, because we want the data, right? So you can design it, if there's funding, this is what we ask you to do. If there's no funding, it's voluntary, but, yeah.
Well, we had discussed up till this point on that. It is under climate, student surveys, student, parent, teacher. We do have some, we have several in the department, actually, that are used for different initiatives, for different grant-based initiatives, really. We had talked about looking for schools and districts who wanted to pilot them, leading with those who are voluntarily interested, and then that gets you away from Headley. And if you did use it, we put it on your dashboard. We can, if we decide we need this, we would have to cost estimate it and do that whole, which we can, certainly. We just have to do that work.
And then I, you know...
Both avenues.
And then I also want to make sure that Lupe's comment last month about that it needs to be readable, so between now, I mean, you guys have the staff to help us with that as well. And then finally, I don't know how you do it, but some kind of a way, a metric for broad class offerings. And I know that maybe there's not many electives with the legislature, maybe they haven't allowed many electives, but whatever there is available...
Yep. Let me point out a couple of things that are already in here, so under the school...
Class art access, I saw that one.
Art access, but under the school quality, student success, and there was the, it's not on this graphic, the access to fine arts, music, physical education, and a library, media specialist, and then the art access. And then we had talked about, there's one other in here.
Dual enrollment.
Extracurriculars and...
Advanced coursework.
Dual enrollment, all the advanced coursework, yep, over on the side.
Okay.
So we can, if that isn't enough diverse offerings, we can think about it. But we had really broadened out to say, are you kind of, are you offering whole child, both in terms of more than just reading and math, and also the spectrum? So early childhood and advanced coursework and high school transition to post-secondary.
And you know, when I, when I pushed for alternative to the A to F when I was in the legislature, I really wanted to also allow schools to select one or two things that they think parents are wanting, basically how they can sell their school. I don't know if some areas it's safety, some areas it might be, I don't know, PhD teachers or, you know, whatever the, whatever the metric is, somehow allow schools to say, this is what we'd like to showcase in our dashboard.
So what we do right now is, well, what we do right now in the current system is there's something called points of pride that they submit. So they write in and say, here's what we're proud about, and it goes on their scorecard. Are you thinking that or some other?
Somehow, it would have to be objective. So if they say that we are, you know, the safest, or we got the most PhD, that it's somehow objectively verifiable, not that it has to be objective when they submit it, but it has to be verifiable. I don't know. That was my own thought. We got till June, I'll move on.
No, but you can have a district section, that's fine. Let's see, I got Dr. Z, and then Cassandra, then Eileen?
Yeah, I just...
Oh, Lupe, sorry.
Okay. The graduation rate, does that only apply to high schools, or does it apply to middle schools, or?
Currently, right now, it is the actual official graduation rate from high school. I think something some other states have played around with that didn't quite make it through the feedback process for us, but we could reinvigorate, is like a early warning indicator or that transition from middle school to high school, how many make that gap in the pipeline, like how many transition, or how many transition beyond ninth grade? So we could add in indicators of transition or pipeline. We had asked a couple of the professional organizations to give us some other key markers, like is it passing ninth grade English that we should be reporting on or, or something? We didn't really get a recommendation back, but I think we, we should look at other things. But yes, to your question, the graduation rate is graduation from high school.
Okay. I'm just making a mental note, that's, that's a thing that then would not apply to the majority of our schools.
Yeah.
I think it does make sense to have it as a standalone evaluation, because students can make their own decision after, what is it, after age 16 to drop out, apart from parents. So I think that's something about the school climate, if you've got a climate that's supportive of students picking it out and getting a degree, so, all right.
Okay, Cassandra, and then Eileen, then Lupe.
Just a couple of questions. First of all, if, if I'm looking at this, are these things that I can click on and I get more information? Is that how that works?
Yeah, that would be, that would probably be the usability. I mean, again, the way this kind of process would work is, once we have clarity from you guys on, these are the things. Then we'd have to go through a fairly decent, like usability testing, rules definition, reporting requirements, build what we think works, bring some people in and say, can you actually read it? We started to do that, and one of my staff members had this idea about going to the mall even and stopping people and being like, what would you get from this? Which I thought was actually really innovative. I'm like, you should do that. So long answer to say, yes, there would be a click-through, there'd be more information behind, so we'd want some quick at a glance and then some learn more about it, sort of.
All right, so, so we can include definitions, then?
Yes.
For example, college-ready graduation rate from high school, what does that mean?
Yep. Do you want me to tell you, or do you want?
Yes, could you tell me, please?
Okay. So, yes, that came from, it is, so, one of the very common comments we heard about grad rate in the state, and I heard this a surprising amount, was grad rate doesn't mean anything. You can graduate with, you can be not proficient, you can just, it's just seat time. Is that entirely true because of the Michigan American curriculum? But how districts implement the American curriculum is on them, and there is variation, and we know that. So, the college-ready graduation rate is a, the percent of your graduates who were college-ready on the SAT, which has its own problems as a measure, but if this is just information...
Right. So, we need to let people know what that means.
Right, what it means. We could also think about, to Michelle's point, you know, college-ready or next step-ready. Like, what would the, what would the other readiness indicator be to divide by the grad rate if we wanted to? What else would capture it, so?
Because I can tell you, when I speak to groups, I always ask them the question, what do you... You've all heard career and college-ready, right? And everyone's heard of it. And then I say, okay, now who knows what it means? And the answers I get have absolutely nothing to do with what it actually means. In fact, maybe 1% to 2% actually understand what it means. So, if we're going to use labels like that, and I've been harping on this for years now, labels are misleading, and so we need to define it.
Yep.
Second thing, dropout rate, is that four, five, six year?
Dropout rate is only, oh, you just stumped me. I was going to say it's only, it's not calculated with a cohort, but it, it is. So, I don't know.
Okay, you can get back to me on that.
I think it would, we would probably follow like we do with grad rate, which is we report four, five, six.
Okay.
Dropout is most meaningful in the sixth year when we're sure you're gone.
Right.
I mean, because there's some, there's some, yeah, you're not, we're not sure. If you leave the state, we're not sure you're gone for a little while. There's some ways we lose you and you don't show up. And I've actually long liked dropout rate as an accountability indicator as opposed to grad rate because I think it's a more precise measure of who's not going to finish versus who's kind of continuing or who's got these different paths. But that's my own.
And then the last thing I just have is, and this is because I work in higher ed, remedial enrollment. I don't know if you've seen recently, but there's been several articles on Accuplacer, which is the placement test used by many of our community colleges. And basically highlighting the fact that this is a flawed test, that it tends to put people into remedial education when the reality is they could do just fine in a traditional higher ed classroom. And so, I'm afraid that it might be a little disingenuous to include remedial education placement as a qualifier because that doesn't necessarily mean that those kids belong in remedial education. So, just throwing it out there.
Yep. I think, so process-wise going forward, and that's why I open up to the board, and Superintendent and I are saying to the board, we should think about how we're going to get to agreement on what you guys want on here. I don't think at this point we're saying the department will say, yes, we need it or you don't need it. Like, there's pros, cons to all of these. We can give you the information. But I would love to come out of this with you guys saying, we all agree that these are the measures so that we have consensus and we can build. The other thing I want to flag is we should be as ambitious about the cool things we can put on the dashboard and then know that we will have to roll them out over time. If we don't have it now, it won't be on next year's dashboard because we can't back collect. And that's okay. We can have a placeholder. We can say it's coming. But just be aware that getting where we want it to go, if we don't want to be limited by the current, then we'll have to have a rollout plan. I think you all get that, and I think you want to go to the right measures, which might take a year or two. Which is why the June date is important for what needs to go now and then what do we want to keep developing? We have another cycle to go through.
Okay. Eileen, then Lupe, please.
So, I wanted to ask about the, on option three. You've listed a school value. Took me a little bit of time to kind of peer at those pale letters, but I believe it says school value for one number and state value for the second.
Yeah.
Okay. And over in option two, which I can see clearly, you're using the school value for the grades.
Yes.
Okay. So, what's the difference between the school value and the state value?
Yep. In option three or in option?
In option three.
Yep. So, the, and actually, you're flagging another thing we need to discuss is what is the comparison value that you want to put up here? So, the difference between the school value is what did that school get? The state value is what's the state average. Superintendent just said, what's a comparable school or district look like? So, we can get into that. There's pros and cons to that, though, because a lot of those. Most of which, what's a comparable school, gets really an interesting conversation. Somebody has suggested, where's the national comparison number on this? Like, so Michigan, and these are real numbers. Like, Michigan's average on, I think, ELA or math, whichever one this is, is right around 38 for certain content areas. What's the national average? Now, not all these numbers have a national comparison. What other number, like what is the comparison number? Because as you guys know, the comparison insinuates a judgment. So, if you put the school value and then the comparison is the lowest performing school in the state as the comparison value, that's a different, you know what I mean? So, we'll have to talk about what the comparison is. But yes, this is just literally the state average for that thing.
Okay. And the additional indicators that are on option three would be on any of, on both of the other two also. The, you've got additional indicators, and you're saying with the transparency dashboard. The upper part is the transparency dashboard. The additional indicators would be on any of the options, correct?
Um, yes. So...
I just want to, these are just...
Yeah.
I am really concerned, I express concern about the visual, the people, the ability of an average parent to decipher the information on the dashboard, on option number three. I'm still there, and I just don't believe that it will trigger parent engagement without context being given. And I don't know what the correct context is, whether that's a state average or just a value for the, for the school, I'm sorry, the school value. I'm just giving a letter grade for the school value. I could see that even. I'm less interested in national. I think this is a Michigan question. And so, for me, if ESA has the goal of helping parents understand, then I want to go with the kid and the parent. And I would want you to consider and the board to evaluate whether we should be shopping option three with the public, but then doing something that the board agrees on for a letter value as opposed to the state value. It could be the state value as a letter grade. It can be the school value as a letter grade. But to me, if I saw student proficiency at 36% and then I said, oh, that's a C on the transparency dashboard, that would make sense to me. These numbers right now, as a parent, don't do anything to help me engage. They don't let me ask questions, and they don't advocate me, they don't allow me to advocate for my child. And I think that's a major concern, not only for ESA, but for what we want to see happening with these schools. We cannot drag the weight of unengaged parents towards school proficiency. We can't do it by ourselves. Parents have to engage. We know that. You'd listen to the PTA saying that they're child's first and best educator, and that's been my mantra for the entire time. So, and I'm also more than a little concerned about the loss of special ed clarity. And I think that having a letter grade for the one end group that we're measuring, which is English learner progress, would make me feel a lot more comfortable that we have context for what we're doing with special ed.
Thank you very much. Lupe, and then we'll move on. Lupe?
You know, as, well, first of all, if we're going to discuss this more in length at the retreat, then I'll just wait to ask my questions then.
We are, it's going to be a major topic in the retreat.
Then I'll ask my questions.
Okay. So, we just want to be clear that with the board, that when we're done in June, that will be our first draft that we run next year, but we'll continue to make improvements as we go along. But we just need to be clear with the board that whatever you give us, we need final directions in June. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, state and federal legislative update. Marty, please. Where's Marty?
Thank you. I too don't have a PowerPoint, but I have a song I'd like to sing. I'm just kidding. We don't have time for that. Anyway, the legislature is back in session after summer, spring break. And so, some committee meetings are scheduled this week. One of them is the Michigan American Curriculum Subcommittee, it's the Subcommittee of the Senate Education Committee. There were four House bills that amended the, that would amend the Michigan American Curriculum that passed the House. They're now in the Senate. I'm guessing that the Senate Education Committee is going to let the Senate Michigan American, Michigan Senate, Michigan American Curriculum Subcommittee start to do its work. They have a meeting this Thursday at 3:00. We're going to have a short presentation, basically explaining what the Michigan American Curriculum is. And then they're going to have a presentation by former Lieutenant Governor John Sherry and St. Clair ISD Superintendent Dan DeGrove, who were members of the Sherry Commission back in 2004, which kind of set the stage for the Michigan American Curriculum Higher Standards. So, that's going to be this Thursday. The State Board's Legislative Committee met last Monday, and I'd like to pass it over to Eileen Weiser.
Hello. So, I just wanted to add a couple of things to Marty's Weekly Legislative Committee Digest. First, for those of you who are masochists like I am, you can watch the House Education Reform Committee. Not always, but most times. I haven't marked, but I have no idea. I just hit something. But basically, if you do a screen, if you do a search for Michigan House TV, it pops right up. And the Senate is a little more opaque. They don't televise as often. Yesterday's committee hearing was not on. Do you know if tomorrow's Subcommittee Meeting will be televised?
I do not know. That I'll find out.
Okay.
I think part of the issue is the rooms that these meetings are in are not always wired for television.
Got it.
So, I think that may be a reason. I'm sure it's not a non-transparency issue.
All right.
Yeah.
But if you could do me a huge favor, and in the future when you do this, just put the link.
Yep.
That might help.
Okay.
Okay. And then on the House and Senate calendars, if there are any of you who wish to comment to either craft a statement today, to respond to any of the things that are on the House calendar that are going to be heard this week, we would need to do that at this meeting. But State Board of Ed members can also provide statements via email for tomorrow's committee meetings. And again, I've just sent it to the clerk, but you need that off the TV thing. So, if you can make this any simpler in case people do want to comment. It's best to do it, normally our meetings are on Tuesday. It's best to get it in by Wednesday afternoon so they have it. They tend to meet right away at 9:00, and you may not, they may not receive it if you send it at 8:30 on the committee meeting day. Carolyn's looking at me.
No, I'm just listening.
Listening. And then attached and posted today, with today's meeting materials, was the memo from Marty dated April 6th, which has all of the action that's going on in the House of Representatives and in the Senate. And again, at this point, if you wanted to, what I'd like to see happen for these board meetings, given the Open Meetings Act, would be for board members to take a look at that attachment before the meeting. And if there are issues that you wish to have discussed or a statement developed by the legislative committee that you can refer to us, refer us to, refer to us for drafting, then that would be the way to do it. That'd be the best way of doing it. And I don't know if any of you looked at this, Marty, or you just want to go through it?
No, go ahead.
No, I'm going through it. You know the ones, I think, you know us well, and I suspect that you know ones that you might think would be of interest to the board.
Yep. Well, there are several bills that are on the floors of both the House and the Senate. Some dealing with fingerprinting, make it permissible to fingerprint. Some dealing with the truancy package. There's a Senate bill of interest that would do away with the Labor Day start, but would require schools that begin before Labor Day to not have school on Mondays or Fridays before Labor Day. So, that's on the floor. There is a bill in the House that would prohibit bargaining to be an issue, to have the school calendar be a bargaining issue for the local teachers. There's a bill to require ISD boards to be elected. So, there are a number of bills that are on the floors that are, that could be adopted. So, if you have any interest in any of those, I'll be sure. Not, well, they're just back today or this week, so I'm not sure what the action is yet.
So, sorry, if there's no interest on the board's part of directing the legislative committee to develop a statement, then I think we're home free, so we're closed.
Okay.
Is there anything in here that would trigger interest from the board for action?
You said that it's connected to the agenda, the bills that are...
The, if you were on your iPad, it would look like this.
Right.
And what you do is open up the legislative committee, the legislative presentation that Marty made.
Right, the electronic version of the board agenda.
Oh, you emailed it to us.
Yeah. Well, you emailed this for sure.
Yeah.
Did you email that, too?
That is on the actual, that's an attachment to the State Board Agenda, which Marilyn sends out.
April 12th.
It's open to the public, yeah. And Caroline tells me that the Senate Education Subcommittee on American Curriculum is televised. So, I will send it to them.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yes? So, who's coming next month?
We're inviting the legislative committees next board meeting for lunch with us, right?
Correct.
Is that correct? I don't think we've got responses yet.
No.
No, it's close to being sent. It's drafted. It's not been sent yet.
That's right. The President's just approved it. That's right.
Right.
Okay.
All right. So, with that, Nikki, anything from Nazby?
Nothing. I'm going to orientation in June. If you all have any questions or things that you'd like me to talk about or ask questions while I'm there, maybe think about it between now and then.
Great, thank you. Now, consent agenda, are there any items the board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda before a vote? Hearing none, all in favor, or a motion for the consent adjutant?
Support.
Moved and supported. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Is there any other comments by State Board of Education members?
Um, yeah.
Tom and Lupe?
I guess I have a significant amount of parents who are concerned about, or they believe that, and I agree with them, that it's a parental, parents' right to be able to decide to opt out of testing, particularly the state testing. And, I mean, these, we're supposedly giving this service to the parents, and they are the customers. And so, can't really dictate to the customers. So, you know, the letter that was sent out and it's, you know, there's other letters that districts are saying that, you know, basically you've got to strap your kid in and they're going to take this test whether you want them to or not because the state superintendent said so. So, I think that they should have that ability to opt out, and I think it's something we could address later. I did attend American Education Research Association. Dr. Charles Payne spoke on the limits of schooling and the power of poverty was his presentation at the DIA. And I came away with some really good information. And kind of combined with that, I'm really looking forward to working with Michelle as both co-presidents talked about. What I've kind of been talking to Michelle and others about is really a real intense focus, you know, monthly to really get parent, you know, maybe meetings with parents and open meetings, meetings with administrators, local administrators, local teachers, to really look at, I don't want to say bottom-up, but I just, I'd like to see grassroots ideas. Also, look at what's working around the country, you know, at the grassroots level initiatives. So, I'm not interested in really top-down, and it's just my own personal, we haven't really discussed. We'll discuss more about what this looks like for next month. But I'm not really interested in top-down solutions. I'd really like to look at bottom-up ideas and that we can really spread throughout the state and see what the challenges are. Are they finding things that are really impediments to doing what they think is best for the kids? That would satisfy the parents the most in the urban areas? And so, and the challenges that they're facing, just to really understand what's going on at the, and really listen and maybe come up with some suggestions. So, I'm looking really forward to it. I intend it. I hope it's going to be something that's a very significant effort by this State Board, but also by, you know, via committee.
Thank you. Tom, Lupe, please.
Can I ask a question to you?
Sure.
Did you say that this committee is going to encompass the whole state?
You know, we're going to, we're talking about, I mean, I haven't decided, I'm not going to be the one that decides. I think the co-presidents will, and we still have this whole issue of Open Meetings Act, but I think that'll be resolved. I know that we can have committees. But, you know, I don't know what that, what exactly it'll look like. If you'd, you know, like to, I mean, we're certainly talking about structure and what it would mean. I think it would be, you know, maybe 12 meetings of once a month throughout the state, in different locations throughout the state and something like that.
I could jump in, because I, you know, I could see, talking about Grand Rapids, that you, I would come to you and see who's there, what your thoughts are, who we should reach out to. And like in Saginaw, too. Or if you, I would go to PM or Flint. So, and, or if you wanted to be on the committee, that would be awesome. That would be great. So, yeah, it's a statewide. And I would even say, I envision it to be, you know, there's a focus on urban because that's where a lot of schools are reaching, having a lot of challenges. But there are priority schools that are in rural areas and that are in even in the suburbs. So, I also, even though the majority, I think, are urban, I think we would also want to look at some of the, some of the other schools and also see what the schools in the urban communities and other communities are doing that are successful and that are, that don't, that get missed.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, my report...
Finish up, and then we'll go to Eileen. Go ahead, Lupe.
May I?
Yep.
Okay. I wanted to report that we selected the Michigan Teacher of the Year, and you will hear about that later on. that later on, I think in June.
It's you again.
Also, not replaced, I said, right? I said, we selected. We are not replacing, you will always be a Teacher of the Year. Especially if you're from the West Side.
It just won't be your year.
Okay. And then the other thing that Tracy, you mentioned it in your report, media training. I don't know whether it's the same kind of training that I was approached with from a professor at Western Michigan University. So, she talked to me a little bit about it and she asked me, how are you incorporating that in your Top 10 in 10 and how are you doing this and that? I said, you know, I think the best thing to do is come to a board meeting and during open comment, address the board so we all know what you're talking about. So, that's a new terminology for me, but I think I know what it means, but let's, you know, there's different perspectives. So, media training is one that we have to look out for. And then the other one is that May the 5th is Cinco de Mayo for the Mexican-American community and as it turned out to the whole United States. And that celebration happened, starting in California, it's not even a Mexican, from Mexico, activity that they celebrate. They only celebrated in Puebla, where the Battle of Puebla was fought. And the Mexicans defeated the French and ousted the king and the queen. And so, when I was teaching, I would teach the history and the word that we used was determination because the French army had the horses and the plumes and the rifles and the guns and everything they needed. They were the mighty force in the world, but the Mexicans weren't even an army, but they were people, they were determined that they were going to take over their city. And they did. Okay. So, that's why we celebrate in the United States because of the determination that was shown by the Mexican people. And so, now it's become a very commercial and, you know, adult beverages and all of that is. But we don't celebrate it like that in the Caberitoana Cesarita Chavez. So, all of you are invited to our Cinco de Mayo. We teach the educational part of the Battle of Puebla and why we celebrate Cinco de Mayo. So, when you celebrate it in your own way, which should be a Cinco de Mayo in our lives every day, we should be determined. And I think on the State Board, we're showing a lot of determination. I remember when Brian started and he started talking about the Top 10 in 10, I couldn't even say it. And I remember Marilyn went, yeah, Top 10 in 10, or Benjamin, oh, you're talking about Duncan. Yeah, I couldn't even say it. So, now look at the report that was given to us today. So, with determination, we're going to be able to do a lot of things on this board. And our theme is determination in the face of challenges. So, we have a lot of challenges throughout our work as board members, as a superintendent, as a department. So, let's keep that in mind. Let's celebrate Cinco de Mayo every day of our lives. Thank you.
Very good. Eileen and Dr. Z, please.
I can't follow up after Cinco de Mayo.
All right. Dr. Z, please.
All right. I too attended Dr. Payne's presentation there at the DIA. And his, a very impressive presentation. And his insights basically boil down to this, that urban districts can make a real difference in student achievement through relationship and through rigor. And by rigor, he doesn't mean rewarding the smart, but rather expecting students to work hard and to achieve at their own level. And one of the things I conclude from his insights is that the real work has to come at the local level, which kind of dovetails with some of Tom's favorite themes, self-determination. And that impacts on an issue on the commission report. Are we going to be a general commanding an army or are we going to be a traffic cop? My conception of the State Board of Education is that we're a traffic cop. We enable the various educational entities, some with deeply differing local values, some with deeply differing needs, hopefully to work together. And my vision includes private schools and homeschools because experience shows that the vast majority of these eventually come in or out of the public school system. But I think that's an issue that we have to face. Are we going to be a top down organization like an army and expect conformity in all the ranks? Or are we going to be more modest role, a traffic cop that identifies what are the rules of the road that allow differing systems and institutions to work together? So, that would be my closing thought for the day here.
Yep, that's fine, Nikki. And then Pam?
As you guys are talking about the committee work, I'm just wondering, so would reading literacy be something you would tackle in an urban education committee? Or would it be good to, as you're talking about the urban education committee, consider also a reading literacy committee, a separate one? Or even like an evidence-based practice one, even though you'd be looking into evidence-based practice that impacts urban districts as well? I don't know if that's something, having two separate committees tackling those issues or even just a general evidence-based practice committee? Just throwing in some ideas?
That's a good question. I would like to weigh in on that if it's my turn.
Let's see, it was Pam, then Eileen.
So, we just heard today from a district that's doing everything right. And then we saw a video of districts that are doing everything right. And one of the things that we need to deal with, because we had the special ed hearings that the Lieutenant Governor assembled, is whether we already know a lot of the problems that urban and rural districts inflicted with bad statistics are enduring for children who are in poverty, children who are in broken homes, and whether part of what the board should be doing, or the majority of it, should be saying, here's what can be reached for.
So, I sign up firmly for evidence-based practices. I have no trouble withholding hearings around the state for, at schools that are succeeding and schools that are struggling, to have that balance so that we can compare what's going on with schools that are succeeding if it's not happening and the schools that are struggling. But to help them with the partnership agreements that are coming up, I think that they need to reach for, you know, in whatever way it takes, whether it's parents or teachers or, you know, or civic organizations to support them and volunteers. If we don't show them how districts are reaching for that and succeeding, then I don't think that acknowledging the difficulties that they face will do them any good. If it's money, that's a different story, and we know that money can definitely be a significant solver. But we also have districts that have plenty of money and aren't achieving as well as districts that don't have as much. So, if really what we're doing is holding out the chance of a better tomorrow for children, then I would say we should be looking at that chance and supporting it. And we should listen to the things that aren't working so that we can make sure that people have access to information and any other support we can give them. But that's not the purpose, I believe, of the State Board of Ed.
Thank you. Pam, please.
I just wanted to thank you, Brian, as well as staff, for the work that you're doing around the partnership model. I don't think I got a chance to do that last month because I had to step out, but just seeing the work that you all are doing on the ground, I haven't been able to make it to the meetings, but I may as well be at the meetings because I definitely hear about what is going on there. And so, really appreciative of you being there. I mean, I know that you've been back and forth in districts and obviously I have actually seen you in some districts. So, I know it's a lot of work and, I mean, I know it's a bit abstract, but definitely know that the districts are appreciative and whatever we can do to support you as local community people as well as, you know, sitting here on the board, open for that as well. But just wanted to thank you for the work that's being done.
Thank you.
Just one last announcement because some of you were not in the room with me during lunch, but I am going to be a grandmother.
Yay.
Good November.
She's already a grandmother.
Again, I just, but I just have one, so now I'm going to have two.
Very good. Future meeting dates, Tuesday, May 16th, regular meeting. Wednesday, March 24th, 9:30, State Board of Ed Retreat. Tuesday, June 13th, 9:30, regular meeting. Tuesday, August 8th, regular meeting. If there's any specific items the board would like to have on future agenda items, please let me or one of the co-presidents know. And with that, even though all that has gone on today, we're still a journey five minutes early.
Yes.